Item 10A, Adopt a Resolution Directing Initiation of the Property Owner Notice and Protest Process as Required by Proposition 218 for Proposed Water and Wastewater Rate Increases for 2017, 2018 through '21, 2021, and 2022. Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, 2016-17 is the final year that has in place approved water and wastewater rates for city customers. The water and wastewater funds operate without tax support as each is funded solely by rate payers, and these funds account for all expenditures necessary to operate, maintain, and improve our critical utility systems. Multi-year adjustments were last approved by the City Council in 2009 and then in 2012. The 2012 approval covered a five-year period through June of 2017. The last annual adjustments for both water and wastewater were close to 10% per year. The City Council awarded a contract to Bartle Wells Associates to update the water and wastewater rate models to ensure that revenues continue covering operating costs and necessary infrastructure improvements. The Council is well aware that the average infrastructure age in San Bruno for water and wastewater is nearly 60 years old, with some sections of pipeline over 100 years old. In 2012, in setting the rates and an aggressive timeline, the City Council approved 20-year water main replacements and a 25-year sewer main replacement schedule. The rates that you'll be discussing tonight continue that aggressive replacement of this older system. Alex Handler from Bartle Wells is here to talk about a couple of specific points around the rates, really the content of the analysis, the cost for operation and capital costs, and three options that were considered by the Utility Subcommittee.
Thank you. Really, the goal of our analysis was to, you know, develop financial projections was a big part of it, and recommend rates that recover your cost of service looking out into the future. Right now, the city's facing a number of financial challenges, both on water and sewer. On the water side, as Jim mentioned, you've got a lot of aging facilities that need replacement. Number one, you've got some old water tanks that need to be replaced in the next couple of years. You've got miles of pipelines out there that need to be replaced, just like every other agency on the peninsula. The total CIP for water was over $80 million with cost inflation over the next 10 years. So these rates are aimed at achieving that over time. In addition, like every agency in the peninsula, you've been faced with pretty large wholesale water rate increases from SFPUC. SFPUC rates have more than doubled since 2010. They just came out with some new projections showing 27% additional rate increases over the next five years, and folks are always dealing with ongoing cost inflation just to stay afloat with water and wastewater. On the sewer side, similar story. You've got a lot of old pipelines, but you're also dealing with a couple of other challenges. You're facing the need to address the capital needs for a consent decree with SF Baykeeper and to do some projects to meet your Regional Water Quality Control Board permit requirements. Those projects total $25 million. They need to be done within the next approximate year and a half. On top of that, you're a partner to the water pollution control plant that's operated by South San Francisco. They're in the process of moving forward with a major digester improvement project that's going to require the city of San Bruno to pay its roughly 27% share on that, which will be reflected in increased debt service that you owe to South San Francisco. So you're facing a number of needs, all in a backdrop where you're coming out of a drought. Water use has declined in this city by almost 20% over two fiscal years. That's taken a hit out of revenues. Residential use is down about 23%, 24%, and commercial use down a little bit less than that. So what did we do? We developed detailed financial projections based on the best information available. We try to use slightly conservative, very reasonable assumptions to determine where the rates will go, and we developed a few different financial scenarios. The first one was what was kind of the lowest rate increases that could achieve the city's objectives, and that was 5% rate increases per year, each year for the next five years, both in water and sewer. We met with the Utility Subcommittee, with staff on a number of occasions, and out of that derived a couple of other scenarios that we looked at, including slightly higher rate increases in the 6% range for five years, and also a scenario that started a little bit higher with 8%, 7, 6, 5, 5, so generating a little more funding upfront. The benefits of the higher rate increase scenarios are you generate more money for your capital needs, less reliance on debt service. Although many of these projects can be funded on a pay-as-you-go basis, in order to generate the level of revenues needed to hit your capital needs, it looks like you might have to do some limited debt financing, and with more rate increases, it reduces the need for that debt financing. So we looked at those scenarios, and on top of that, we also developed the rates to support those scenarios. There are some new developments on the legal side regarding Prop 218 with a case in Southern California where tiered water rates are permissible but only to the extent they can be supported by cost of service. So we went through the cost of service allocations on that to make sure your rates meet the cost of service muster. And again, the goal at the end of the day for our recommendations are, you know, move the rates gradually in the right direction so you could meet your financial needs over the next few years. And I will turn it back over to Jim.
Just wanted to add something about the, a point I made earlier about the replacement schedules for the water and wastewater mains that the City Council really took serious and aggressive action in 2012 to attempt to bring our system up to current standards through the 20- and 25-year replacement schedule. The City Council recognized at the time that it was going to take several decades for that to be accomplished. So it was not going to be just a five-year or a one-year process. The Council acknowledged at that time that it was a decades-long process in order to get the system into a more contemporary timeframe. So I would like to just make a couple more points and then turn it over to the Subcommittee to formally present their recommendation. I just wanted to point out that the City Council, or remind you, the City Council's not approving the rates tonight. What the City Council is doing is giving staff direction to mail next week a 218 notice. Proposition 218 requires before setting rates, a 45-day protest period where property owners are notified of the rate increase and given an opportunity to, in writing, and then ultimately to appear before the Council at the time that the rates are actually considered. So just so that you know the schedule, if the Council gives us this direction tonight, our intention would be to mail these notices next week. We would have a 45-day deadline, like I indicated, which would be 45 days prior to the City Council holding a public hearing on the rates on May 9. The second reading would be, again, if the Council elected to go forward on May 23, would be the second reading, and this would allow the Council to have these rates in place by July 1. And that schedule needs to be met in order to have the rates in place by July 1. I think it'd be best if I turn it over to the Subcommittee and let them describe their recommendation, which related to one of the three scenarios that were considered that Alex mentioned.
Marty, Irene?
We haven't planned a formal presentation, but we can team-tag it back and forth. We did exactly what-
You know me, I'd be glad to give it for you, but-
I'm not sorry.[640.29][640.29](Laughter) We just entertained the scenario of doing the 8, 7, 6, 5, and 5 because we were concerned that we weren't doing enough construction and doing enough earlier rather than later. As you know, construction costs go up regardless of what you're doing, and the need to replace the pipelines and the pump stations and the tanks doesn't go away. In fact, every year, it gets more and more crucial and costs more to do. So we entertained that one first. We next looked at the 6, 6, and 6, again, to do the same kind of thing, and then kind of settled on the 5, 5, and 5 because the difference between the 6-1 and the 8, 7, 6-1 wasn't substantial if you think about the impact it would have on rate payers immediately. So we wanted to smooth out what the impact would be on the rate payers. And if some of you have a long memory, you might remember that five years ago, we were entertaining doing 10 years of 10% every year. So due to staff's diligence and cost savings, what do you want to say, practices and all the other things that we've been doing, we managed, our recommendation is that we do the 5, and we will still maintain the schedule that we had previously looked at, and that will get us to where we need to go. The other piece I want to assure people, we have, and I believe San Bruno's the only city that does this, we maintain a 25% discount rate for low-income housing without taking other rate payers subsidizing that. So I know it's no fun to pay your water bill, and especially when you have a rate increase, but we do do that. So I don't know if you want to say anything else?
Anything, Marty?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Irene, and thanks, staff, for this necessary work. So tonight's vote, as was stated, it's to start the process, to get the notification out. And for those of you that know me, this is a very touchy subject because in 2012, when I was an employee here, I spoke out against those rate increases. I thought the 10% was too much over that short amount of time, and I thought that we could have had an opportunity to look at doing something different. It was necessary at that time, the Council decided, to do that because there was a huge requirement for the Baykeeper lawsuit, and that work had to get done. So I'm kind of stuck. I'm thinking, well, you know, we own our own water system. We purchase approximately 30%, 40% of our water from the SFPUC, Hetch-Echi Water, which, as stated, has doubled and is going to go another 27%. Everything's going up. So why does San Bruno still have some of the highest water rates around? In the report, I think it's the fourth highest around. So now that I'm on the Council and being able to have some access to information, I'm starting to have a better understanding of that. So what has happened over the years is that I think we had a late start into the maintenance end of our systems, and we are an older city. Some of our pipes are 100 years old. Well, it took too long to enact the rate increases that were necessary, and I learned during the Subcommittee that apparently back in the day, they would lower the sewer water rates during an election year, and then they would raise them right after the elections were over.
Just so you know, it wasn't us. It was before us.
It was a while ago.
It was a while ago, and that's the main point here, is how this system was put together, how this city grew the way that it did. I'm going to go off topic just a little bit. It's the same thing that we're facing with our parking problem in parts of our towns. It wasn't thought through. My opinion is the water and the sewer systems weren't thought through, and I'll tell you why. If there's a new development, somebody wanted to build a new development, and it's not a gravity sewer, you have to build a pump station to get a forced main to get that sewage out from that lower part and out to the newer part, to the existing system. So what happened in San Bruno was, they didn't think that through, and staff, you can go ahead and correct me if you want, but what happens is, we have, and this is provided by staff, we have six pump stations that serve 1,800-plus, 1,809 residents, and those pump stations for design and construction is $18.5 million. So it kind of starts making sense of why shouldn't we be putting more main in the ground with the money that we raised? That's what people are asking me. Shouldn't, you know, weren't they going to replace all the sewer main? Well, we didn't because they had to replace the pump stations. So that is something that I think is very important for everybody here to understand. We are subsidizing, the whole community is subsidizing those pump stations. So this $18.5 million to do the construction and design, it doesn't include the operations and the little minor maintenance. So that's why our sewer is so high, and it kind of goes also with why our water is so high. When other new developments, they have an assessment district for that new community to put in and pay for that pump station. Other water districts, they charge different zones that you have to pump the water because it costs more energy to pump the water up the hill, right? There's some savings of pumping the water up the hill, leaving it in the tanks and letting the pressure to push down to everybody that's at the bottom of the hill. There's reasons, engineering reasons to do that, but the costs aren't recovered. So we all have to pay for that, and that's an open, honest, transparent, in my belief, reason why things are so expensive in San Bruno. So what are we going to do? I don't want to rate, increase your rates, absolutely not. Then you throw in the drought, right? People are not going to use water like they did ever again because we learned how to take shorter showers, got rid of that water-eating lawn, and been more safe about, or more concerned about how we're using our water and keeping that water as something that's really valuable because it really, really is. So, yes, San Bruno's an old town. We have to do these things, but I'm struggling with, is it really fair for everybody to pay those prices? Here's some good news, okay? So I asked staff, well, what is it that we're doing differently operationally that we can save some money? What, you know, there's one thing about having old pipes, but what about our methods? And for the first time, we're going to be using a different construction material in one of our projects, and that's going to save money. That's PVC pipe. I work for Water Department, Alameda County, and they're going to be, they've been, that's all they use, is PVC pipe. So it's 30% cheaper than ductile iron pipe, and it's a lot easier to install, so there should be some savings with that. So the last thing I want to talk about in this staff report is how to recover the money. Currently, everybody here, you get your sewer water bill, you pay it. Well, unfortunately, over the years, the renters, at times, they run up their water bill, sewer bill, they don't pay it. Another month goes by, they get a notice, they stop the water, they come in and pay a certain amount, they get behind, they pay a certain amount, then they leave, and it's too hard to recover all of that money. In 2012, I think it came up to, since 2012, I think it's $300,000 that has not been recovered. Well, I want to recover all that money. I believe all that money should be placed on the property owner. The property owner should pay the bill. He can allow, he or she can allow the renter to pay in that person's name, but that bill will always be collected from now on, and I want to make sure that happens at this time. I don't want to wait. I know we can wait. It says in the report, we can wait and do that anytime, but to get my vote, I want to make sure that's included. So we chose the lower of the ones that thought were going to be the most responsible thing that we could do here to actually pay for the improvements that we need, and that's why we settled on the 5%.
So, slide the questions for the Chair. Thank you. So are you saying right this second that if we, as a whole Council, don't approve moving the water rate, the water bill to the land owner? The property owner? That you won't vote for the increase? Is that what you just said?
Currently, what we're going to do, all we're voting for is the notices to go out at the 5%.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Currently, we're voting just on the notifications going out. The final vote for the rate increase will come with, what, 45 days afterwards at that time, whatever it was said?
And I understand, you know, maybe that's a discussion we should have at that time.
Right, right. I'm just letting everybody know now.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
Well, the resolution is to actually send out the 218, so would someone like to introduce that resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Not everybody's had an opportunity to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The Vice Mayor, I, or the public may.
I didn't realize you were waiting. Go ahead.
I'm willing for the public or the Vice Mayor. If not, I'll go.
I just want to mention, because I'm sure there's going to be a lot more talk on this in the coming meetings, but there's a lot of data here. There's a lot of comparisons, and I remember every time, every time we go through these rate increases, it seems like I ask questions, and the answer is always, well, we're not comparing apples with apples. I think we're getting very close to that, and I'm sure the consultant can say that. We are not the most expensive, and even if we were close to being very expensive, we have, like what was stated, we have a deteriorating system, and we really only started repairing it 20 years ago, started 20 years ago. So it's an uphill climb, and even if you don't feel that it's warranted, the system has got to work. I mean, we've always said that people really don't care unless the lights go on and the toilet flushes. Well, if the toilet doesn't flush, there's a big problem. And so I'm in favor of this as long as we do the projects, and I believe our track, our history is that track record is that we've been doing the projects. And it looks like a lot of money, but it's really, the proposal is, with water and sewer, is $14 a month combined. So it's really only $7, you know, $7 a month each, I believe. Actually, it's only $7 a month total. Yeah, it's $14, $14 for both water and wastewater. So it's only about $7 a month increase, which I think is worth the investment.
Rico?
Thanks, Jim. So when we last were up here, and thank you for your detail, the Council did vote. It was a 3-2. Not all of us did, and I knew it had to be raised for the infrastructure, but I thought it was just too much for a lot of our residents to bear. So I'm not saying I disagree with the recommendation at this time. I'm not saying that I, and obviously, things still need to move and get, no pun intended, and they've got to get replaced and et cetera. But I've read the report, and I've read it twice, and based on the report, I'm not 100% convinced. And if I'm not 100% convinced, then I'm wondering, when folks ask me, then how do I convince them? How do I tell them? So we heard about the good cost savings and the practices and the diligence. What are they? Some people say, well, you don't have the sewer lateral responsibility. Where's the savings there? That's a whole nother discussion. You know, what have we done to have efficiency and effectiveness? How have we curtailed costs? Have we not done an audit per se, but have we looked into expenditures and how things operate? The projects that we, five years ago, that the Council approved, have they been accomplished? Were they on budget? Are they still not complete? And I think those are things that folks need to answer because you need to show transparency, you need to show that you can convince others rather than go show them the sewer line. I get it. I do understand that perspective. I'm not an expert in it, but I do know that it doesn't sound like a lot on the whole picture, but it still affects our residents. And so for me, like I said, I'm not saying I disagree with the recommendation or the need for the community. What I'm saying is I'm not convinced. The report has not convinced me, and some of the questions that I just asked aren't there. I also would have liked to at least seen a draft of what was going to go out to the residents. Not that it can be final until Council action takes on which scenario, but I would have liked to see the data and the information as we have for the garbage company that's coming up. I know that that's already a pre-described number, but still, we could have had a draft. So those are some of the concerns that I have of not being convinced.
Thank you. Anybody from the public? Okay, would someone like to introduce the resolution on the 218? Pardon? Come to the podium, please.
Sandra Perez-Vargas, 200 Block of Mastic. A lot of my neighbors have been talking about this topic. They're already squeezed so tight, and their concern is not just the cost, but the quality of the water. Our skin has become drier over the last few years. It feels toxic. We've had it tested. We're told there's no lead in it. So our concern is not just the cost, but we want the quality to be looked into. I don't know if it's because the drought threw the water levels off, they had to add more chemicals. I'm not sure what went into play, but there's a definite difference in the water, how it feels, how it smells, and how it burns. So that's a concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
To the Chair, I'm sorry. If this Prop 218 goes out at the 5% scenario, and it comes to decision time, and Council, for whatever reason, says you can't go higher, but you could go lower, is that an accurate statement without re-noticing?
It could be lower. That is correct.
That's an option.
And adopting a five-year rate does not preclude the Council in taking some other action during the five years. It's not-
To reduce, not to raise. It can never go beyond the 5, is that correct?
But no, meaning if the, if the Council, I mean, if the 5% proved inadequate three years from now, the Council is not locked in for five years. The Council could do another 218 process and increase the rates.
But if it lowers it, it doesn't need to go through the same process.
If the Council lowered it in a year, it would not have to go through the 218 process.
Thank you for the clarification.
So there's flexibility, I'm just saying, what you do for five years is not locked in. The Council has flexibility year to year.
Anything else? Marty?
So Sandra, I believe if you call the Water Department, have you called the Water Department? They come out, they could, if you have a concern with the water, the water is tested, there's annual report, so just wanted to make sure. There's a whole pamphlet of things they test for, so. There's a whole pamphlet of things they test for, so.
Okay, any action by the council on this?
So I, I'm just going to say again, I, I'm having a problem even voting on this, to be honest with you, because of the questions I've asked that I still haven't had a response to, but I know that they're more detailed and may say, take some time to get, you know, something together. I know within seven days, the document's going to go out, so we're not going to have an opportunity to see that. It is, we'll call it a form of a democracy for the 218 to go out, and then council can regroup and come to that, and I guess I'll have to make a decision at that point, but I'll go ahead and vote for the 218 to go out. But again, I'm not convinced thus far with the information.
Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibarra?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Ruwain?
Aye. I'm 10B.
Mr. Mayor, we have one quick thing that we would like to clarify with the council regarding the 218 notice.
Sure. There is a, the, the 218 requirement is that property owners be notified of rate increases for water and sewer and for garbage. And in the past, this city has notified all of the property owners in accordance with the 218 requirement. My understanding is it was some sentiment expressed by the council to notify not only property owners, but also residents if the residence was a non-owner. I just wanted, so we are going to proceed, unless you direct us otherwise, we are going to proceed in doing that. I, I just wanted, wanted to tell you that the mailing cost, if it was sent only to owners, would be about $12,000. If we send it to residents and owners, it would be 50% higher, about $18,000. That's what we are going to do based on the direction from the council, unless you'd like to direct us otherwise.
Okay. Mail to everybody?
Excuse, I'm sorry, Ken was first, and I'll go.
Does that mean, does that mean that, does that mean that 50% of the households are renters?
Roughly 50% of our households are renters, and that doesn't necessarily translate into who is the customer. A landlord can take responsibility for the water service. Many don't, and we have many renters who are directly responsible as the account holder for water and sewer service.
Okay, thank you.
And that, that's the reason this, I, this issue, Mr. O'Leary may have omitted, this issue came up in the public hearing in 2012, which was the last time you considered rates in the 2, the proposition 218 noticing process. So given that we allow renters to subscribe and take responsibility for utility bills, bills and payments, they are the ones who are most immediately directly affected, and under the requirements, the legal requirements of Proposition 218, we are not required to send account holders notices. We are required to send property owners the notice.
So for clarification, if you send it to a renter who doesn't happen to pay the bill themselves, do they still have a word in 218?
So under Proposition 218, you are required to consider and to take certain actions if you receive a property owner protest of more than 50% of property owners in the community. And we have never come close to that threshold, and we have always reported to the city council the total number of protests that we receive from both residents as well as, I'm, I'm sorry, from both account holders, tenants, as well as property owners. We, we report that all to you and, but you are, under Proposition 218, only required, legally required, to consider the protests from property owners.
Okay, thank you.
And that's one per household.
Do you have something else?
Yeah, I, the, the question was posed, and thank you to both the manager and the director because that was a topic that did come up as a homeowner, but a former renter here in San Bruno who did pay the utility bills, I would, yes, like to have it mailed to everybody.
Okay.
And, and just to follow up, we did not receive the questions in time to prepare. We received Councilmember Medina's questions just now, but we can respond on the Proposition 218 notice. We will have that available and can circulate that to the city council for your advance review prior to sending it out. We, we have a few days before it has to be in the mail, but we're happy to do that.
All right, thank you.
And if it gives any assurance, the, the information that will be presented in the 218 notice is all contained in the agenda packet where all of the tables that Bartles and Wells has, has, has put together, the information that, that flows into the 218 notice. So the information in its raw form has been provided to the council.
All right, thank you.